And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alb?
Here.
Mr. Beistall?
Here.
Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here. Before we move on to citizens' comments, I just want to thank Mrs. Shipley for the great job she did filling in for me the last two meetings when my mother-in-law passed away and I was busy with taking care of some different things. Thank you. Citizens' comments please.
Every member of this school board raised his or her right hand and took an oath when sworn in as a school director. You swore to do your duties and obligations with fidelity in accordance with the Code of Conduct for Pennsylvania school board members. You stood before the electorate and said, "Vote for me, I will represent you." When it came to the most important meeting of the year, the cowardly members of the board who ran from their responsibilities showed their true colors. At the June 30 meeting, only five board members appeared, followed by a sixth one who showed up at 7:30. The public is not stupid. If their objective was to brag that they did not vote for a tax increase, the truth is you turned your back on both your ethics and all the stakeholders that you were elected to represent. This deceitful process used by the administration and board to provide a timely and responsible budget has resulted in serious harm to our support service personnel. A moral alternative was always an option. Where was the preliminary budget in February, March, April, and all of May? Had it been posted in early May and the scheduled meetings of June 5th and 12th had been held, our employees would not have been hurt and a budget would have been passed. Instead, when the plan backfired to hold a slam dunk vote four hours before the state mandated deadline, it is our service personnel who are paying the price for this tragic game. Mr. Calero proposed a budget that eliminated hiring another teacher, had a hiring freeze, and cut the tax increase in half. This was supported by three board members, clearly indicating that preliminary, also known as the final budget, needed to be modified. Why weren't these issues and concerns publicly addressed months ago? This would have prevented the pain, anxiety, and inconvenience which our employees are now suffering. It was pointed out that a budget is not cut in stone. Correct. A fiscally responsible financial plan would allow this district to live within its means, just as all of us taxpayers need to do for survival. But the operative words are responsible school district management, honoring the budget parameters, and having respect for the taxpayers in an impoverished community. With appropriate management, we would not need any tax increases or use $1 of our fund balance. Directors Shipley, Miller, and Rhodes brag about our high achieving, the best, school district in western Pennsylvania. This is the real issue that I have. They are enamored with the phony awards from a business rag, an insurance company, and an organization to which we pay thousands of dollars in dues and fees. The true facts about this high achieving school district is evidenced by the South moreland SAT scores. For eight straight years, our students have scored way below the national average. In 2013, only 65 students took the SAT test. The primary concern of this board should be to work diligently to give our students a quality education to prepare them for their future. They deserve that. Denial is not just a river in Egypt. As Mr. Collins said, if you don't have the courage and commitment to meet your obligations as a school director, step aside. We need a board who will deal with reality, face the truth, demand intelligent and efficient district management, and be fair to all constituents. But most of all, we need school directors who will be dedicated to sending our graduates out into the world to be successful and productive. Contrary to a former school board president's opinion that we need more kids to drop out of school, we need more kids who can realize their potential and make valuable contributions to this great nation. Do your job, or step aside. For years, I have argued that the budget process here is a sham. There was and continues to be no input from either the board or the public. Incredibly, we are spending nearly $2 million a year for administrators who began meaningful budget discussions four hours before the deadline and 10 days after the deadline? Where is the board president during all this time? You could have called emergency meetings, you created the emergency, you could have had meetings every day if you had wanted to. I know that you have been warned that these kinds of actions can have dire consequences. It is inconceivable to me that this $27 million debacle is what the taxpayers and employees of this district are willing to tolerate. This incompetence is unacceptable. We truly have taxation without representation.
I haven't been close to the school in recent years. My four sons graduated from high school in the 70s. They had some pretty good teachers. One of the stars was Professor Siegel, who taught history and organized the History Rangers. He provided T-shirts with their own slogan. Historiae ad veritae odd nauseam. Now, he and Miklas worked together, she was a writing teacher, and so they worked together. The boys all learned how to do research papers, and when they got to college, they were ahead of that. They already learned research papers, they learned them in high school, they didn't have to learn in college. Now, I say, I do read the news of the schools, and I noticed that there is some, there is concern about the taxes, school taxes. Now, I'm here to say that as a retired person, my school tax is not a burden, and I could handle a modest increase with no problem. I wrote this to the Courier last week, but it takes a long to get anything published, a letter, published in the Courier. Why, I'm here to say it personally, I don't see any problem for me if you want to raise taxes a little to keep this program going. Thank you.
I want to say to you as a board that I am a property owner here in Scottsdale. I pay my taxes faithfully, and for me, it's a duty that I can do to the community and for our children. As a homeowner and a landlord, I have many opportunities to speak to prospective tenants. And what I have found in the last six months, two different families that we have rented to and the third family that we did not, want to move to the Southmoreland School District because of the school program. One of them had a special needs child, they were very unhappy with the previous school district they were at. They know that Southmoreland has a good reputation, and they were wanting to move to Scottsdale for that reason. The other family had three children, two of them doing well in their school, the other one was not. And they were told and they heard that Southmoreland is a much better school district, would pay special attention to this child, and so they were looking to find housing in Scottsdale. Now, I had two children that went to Southmoreland, and I appreciate the education they got. I am an ordinary, blue collar worker in town that never attended a board meeting in my life, and nor do I want to attend anymore. But I am letting you all make the decisions with whether you raise the taxes or don't raise the taxes. The important issue that I hope you keep in mind is good quality reputation, good quality education, because Southmoreland has a reputation out there in the public that it is a very good school district. So whatever you have to do, raise taxes or cut budget, whatever you have to do, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Lidle, and I am a graduate of Southmoreland High School. I currently have two children attending school within this district. My daughter Hannah is 12 and going into the eighth grade, and my son Aiden is eight, going into the third grade. Many of you may not know this, but Hannah is actually my stepdaughter, and has been since she was a year and a half. She previously attended St. John the Baptist School here in Scottsdale through first grade when her mother tragically passed away from breast cancer. Hannah was six years old. Her father and I had a tough decision that summer as to where she would attend school the next year. After much thought and for multiple reasons, we agreed that we would transfer her to Southmoreland School District to attend public school. We were worried, not only on her transitioning to a new environment, but also whether she was academically or emotionally ready. I had notified the staff and teachers of our particular circumstance, and they were extremely observant and helpful. Hannah lost a parent that year, but amidst all of her anxiety, she gained a new adventure that helped her take her mind off of her situation. She not only adapted well, but exceeded all of our expectations and still does. She is involved in several clubs, sports, band, as well as the Alpha Program, and she ranks in the top of her class academically. I have no regrets, none, moving her here. If you asked her today, was this the right choice, she would agree. Now, my son on the other hand is a little bit of a different story. I was worried about Aiden starting to, starting school. He is a very active boy who, unless it involves playing with a car or a truck, or being outside, had no interest whatsoever in learning. Imagine my surprise when he came home during the first week of kindergarten and read me a story. I couldn't believe he was actually reading. I still smile when I think of that day. We have had our bumps along the way, but I can honestly tell you that I have seen him grow and mature with each passing year. I cannot take full credit for this accomplishment. He has had the most incredible teachers, both of my children have. We worked together as a team, we always knew we could reach out to each other if we needed to. Is Aiden still active? Yes, he is still very active, but I'm happy to say he's getting straight A's and has learned that the classroom is a place not only to learn, but to have fun. I love my children, I'm their mom, but I also know my kids were loved by every one of their teachers. They didn't have to do anything but teach my kids, in which my opinion they have, but they have done so much more than that over the years. I am proud to say that I still keep in contact with almost all of their teachers, and it puts a smile on my face when they ask me about my kids, because I know they still care. To me, our teachers are invaluable. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a parent of a child at Southmoreland Elementary School. She's going into fifth grade this year. We've been more than pleased with all of her education that she's received here at Southmoreland, starting at the primary center. If a tax increase is what it takes to continue this type of education, then that's what needs to be done in the district. Thank you.
Dr. Mornell?
Before we move on, I had announced a month or so ago that the U.S. News &amp; World Report had recognized Southmoreland High School as one of America's best high schools. I'd like to take an opportunity right now, we received in the mail from U.S. News &amp; World Report, we actually received a banner that can be displayed in our high school. So, Mr. Croftcheck, would you bring a helper, please? Except this is something that you and your faculty and your community can be very proud Thank you, gentlemen. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the June 19, 2014 meeting.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Business and finance fund accounts?
It's recommended that the board approve the 2014 bill's payable.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mr. Calero. Questions on the motion? Roll call please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alb?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Budget discussion?
As you begin your deliberations and discussion of the budget and what you might do on Saturday, I just wanted to frame the discussion a little bit for you. The school laws of Pennsylvania mandate that the Board of School Directors adopt a budget that reflects the amount of funds that will be required by the school district to maintain its program for each fiscal year beginning on July 1st. The administration presented a proposed budget that reflects the educational plan and program that's been envisioned and articulated by both the Board of Education and the administration following careful analysis of the needs of the district. After its adoption, the budget serves as the controlling instrument for all business transactions of the Southmoreland School District. Now, administration presented a budget with the understanding that education is a purchasable commodity. The presented budget supports the stated mission of the district, protects the fund balance, and does impose a minimal tax increase. Administration did not seek Act 1 exceptions and did not recommend a tax increase last year. A recent survey of Westmoreland County school districts revealed that Southmoreland's per pupil expenditures were the third lowest of the 13 districts that responded. Only Greater Latrobe and Norwin were able to boast lower per pupil expenditures. Despite the fact that Southmoreland has recently received several accolades for academic success, the millage rate remains among the lowest in the county. And during the past five years, Southmoreland's budget has grown by an average of .2 percent per year, 2 tenths of 1 percent. Only 10 of the 105 school district, districts in western Pennsylvania have had smaller budget growth, and Southmoreland significantly outperforms each of them. The proposed budget reflects the educational program of the school district. An attempt was made during the preparation of this budget to continue to operate a program that will adequately meet the needs of our students for the coming year. However, we cannot be satisfied with the status quo. We must continually strive to improve. If we allow ourselves to stagnate, then we can justifiably be accused of committing educational malpractice, that is, neglecting to fulfill our responsibilities to both our students and our community. The continued provision of sufficient monies for teaching supplies and materials, salaries of both professional and non-professional personnel, and maintaining and improving of facilities have all been made possible by the ongoing sound management and dedication of the Board of Education in cooperation with the administration, faculty, staff, and community to provide the strongest possible education that's consistent with the limited resources of our community. I just wanted to frame what we did and how we prepared the budget and what it stands for before you begin your discussion.
Mrs. Rhodes, in charge of finance committee, you want to start the discussion?
Sure. We had, we had a party meeting. As far as the budget goes, obviously, the increase, the budget was due to pension obligations, and also we had contractual obligations that we also had to fill. Some of those contracts, people were coming off of having pay freezes for two years. So, the committees that negotiated those contracts felt that it was time for those people to get their raises as they should, as they should. And so, we negotiated that, and to me, that's the two key figures that is driving the budget right now, would be those two issues. Obviously, the pension mandates that we have to fulfill, it's mandated, we have to pay it, there's not much we can do there. As far as the contracts, like I said, we negotiated, and they got slight increases, and that's reflective in the budget. So, that to me is my understanding, I felt that was what the, what the budget was presented to us, and that's where it's, where it's at right now. So, that's...
I will, Mike.
Laura.
This evening, we've heard from a number of individuals concerning the budget and the education level here at Southmoreland, and I certainly think it's, all of it was accurate. Last week, we heard from a number of citizens about the need not to raise taxes. That is in general why I proposed what I did, to somewhere meet in the middle there, to meet the needs of those that are concerned about education level and to meet those that are concerned about the tax levels. I would like to see placed on, for vote on Saturday, my proposal to have the increase be only 1.5 percent, eliminate that one position, teaching position that they wanted to add, and take the money out of the fund balance. I believe Mr. Mornell worked up the figures for that, and he would have the numbers as to how that would affect the budget. You gave me two scenarios here, and I did not address the second one, but you certainly may do that.
And I tried to summarize our discussion on one page, try to keep it at the strategic level, try to not get us lost in all the sundry details. But in the left-hand column was the current plan as of June 30, which was expenditures of, you know, $27.2 million, projected revenues at $26.4 million, a deficit of $829,000. To cover that deficit, $100,000 was a planned budgetary reserve. $304,000 was from our committed fund balances for the early retirement incentive program. Then the balance of that $423,000 would be coming from the unreserved fund balance. Now, some things have happened since we last met on June 30, and, and Mr. Calero asked for a couple scenarios to be looked at. Scenario number one was, as he just said, to remove the proposed new English position at the high school, and to adjust the tax increase by a net amount of 1 and 1/2 percent. So, if we take our expenditures, where they were on June 30, the $27.2 million, subtract out the salary and benefits for the new position, which totals $60,000, you get adjusted expenditures of $27,195,000. Keeping the current projected revenues at the $26.4 million, backing out enough of that tax increase, which amounted to $107,000, to get it down to the 1 percent, 1.5 percent level. Also, what happened, late evening on the 30th, after we met, the House passed the budget. The Senate passed the budget. And today, I believe, Governor Rendell signed the budget.
Corbett?
I say Rendell, I'm sorry, Corbett, let's not get Rendell in the brain. Governor Corbett signed the budget. But the budget comes with some adjustments for all of us. The budget from Governor Corbett's numbers that we got this February to what actually passed, the net difference for us is a negative $188,000 from what I had budgeted as of June 30, using Governor Corbett's numbers. So, backing out that number from this scenario brings us down to adjusted revenues of $26.1 million. So, the deficit under scenario number one goes from a negative $829,000 to $1,630,000. Again, that additional deficit would be covered by the unreserved fund balance. Under scenario two, again, the situation is to remove that proposed English position, also to pull out of the general fund budget all the planned expenditures for athletic costs, the athletic busing, the coaches, the uniforms, the equipment, the guards, refs, athletic director, et cetera. And that came to be $560,000. That adjusts the expenditures down to $26.6 million. Again, using our revenues as forecasted, backing out the total tax increase, and the tax increase that I was using was in total dollars, so that takes out $222,000 in proposed additional tax revenues, minus the budgeted athletic gate receipts of $32,000, taking to effect the new state budget that was passed, so backing out $188,000 there brings us down to an adjusted revenues under scenario number two here of $25,985,000. Now, with that adjustment to the expenditures, also with the adjustment to the revenues, the deficit then drops to $649,000. And the coverage for that would come from the unreserved fund balance. Out on the far right is the administrative recommendation to stick with the expenditure plan that's in place. We have some minor modifications, do some restructuring within the federal program, adjust the expenditures down to $27,240,475. The modification to the revenues would be what happened due to the new state budget, brings us down to adjusted revenues of $26,239,217. The deficit in this scenario would be $1,100,000. On the bottom of the sheet are the various tax millage rates as they would appear under each one of these scenarios. Obviously, the scenario under June 30 was to raise taxes. Same thing with the far right, holding that plan together, and of course, the modification to the millage rates under scenarios one and two.
Before anybody asks a question, can you give the current millage for the two counties so they can write down?
Currently, Fayette...
Do I have that on there?
No, I don't have that on there, I'm sorry, I thought I did. 14 even mills, 14.0 for Fayette, and Westmoreland 71.06, I believe. Actually, works out 71.0597.
Thank you.
So, under the current plan, and using the state methodology, and I think I did when we passed the proposed budget in May, I gave a copy of the sheet from the state budget form on how they rebalance the millage rates based on weighted average collection percentages, the change in taxable assessed values. So, for Fayette County, the proposed tax rate would be 14.3876 mills. So for Fayette County, the proposed tax rate would be 14.3876 mills, actually works out to be about a 2.8 percent, uh, increase on the millage rate. And for the Westmoreland County properties, the new millage rate would be 72.4094, uh, which works out to be about a 1.9 percent tax rate. But in actual dollars, when you put in those tax rates, uh, against the, uh, median assessed value rate, the actual dollar increase, uh, works out to be very even. $18.85 would be the effect per year on the Fayette properties, $18.91 in the Westmoreland County properties, at least on the current, uh, tax increase. So didn't actually go the full Act One index of 2.9 percent, um, close.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I was wondering if, uh, Mr. Croftcheck could answer this. If we would eliminate this, um, English position, uh, how would that impact the, uh, current situation at the high school? I believe you've already answered that, but if you could answer it again.
Yeah, uh, yeah, there's been a, a slight revision in, in the, uh, function of that position. Dan, you want to go into the podium and talk a little bit about just, uh, you know, what our, our current needs on what we're considering?
Yeah, under the last time that I had spoken with the board, we had talked about the position that integrated...
Just to clarify, um, we're calling this an English position, but when it first came out, we were looking for someone who was duly certified in English, French, Spanish. Okay, so we were looking for two, two foreign languages and an English, um, or in some combination thereof. So Dan, go ahead.
So we presented the, uh, the information regarding that. Um, without that position, we really will be, uh, stretched to pretty far with the foreign languages, uh, with, with the overall objective of increasing enrollment in the upper level of foreign languages that we began several years ago. Uh, we see the number of Level Threes and Fours dramatically increase over time. We have upwards of 75 students that have, uh, put in or requested French Level Four, for example, with winit- within itself, um, could merit easily three sections of French Four. We could very well have the ability to have upwards of, uh, over seven periods if need be in both French and Spanish. So it would be, uh, very, very, uh, tight in terms of, uh, the enrollments across the foreign language program.
Mr. Croftcheck, as a point of comparison, where would French Four have been four years ago?
Four years ago would have been, uh, under 20 students enrolled in French Four.
With the being such a tight situation, um, um, obviously I'm thinking that that would probably impact the, uh, the student, uh, the teaching and student, uh, relationship there as far as, uh, work, classwork and that kind of thing.
The, the French, Spanish teachers would both be maximized at seven periods and would see upwards of, uh, at times 32 to 35 if had to be in the classroom.
And that's without this additional, um...
Yes.
Without, okay, that's what I thought.
And it just, you know, obviously years ago, we started this trend and we were very upfront years ago that, that this was coming on the horizon. Next year, we're adding new, new foreign language courses, which is the advanced placement courses. So, uh, and we, we presently have teachers getting, uh, trained to teach, our, our present teachers to teach advanced placement. So we're, we're expanding our, our programming in, uh, in offering higher level, more rigorous courses as we're doing K-12.
At least the last time we discussed this, Dr. Scott had said that, uh, one of the reasons why you have such a large number of students in the senior year was because many of the students had already taken either three or four years of a language and they decided they wanted to take another language. So you were adding students for maybe one year of having the language, not that they had planned on taking it in the beginning, but they had an open period rather than have a study hall, they decided they'd take a language. Is that, is that not true or is it...
There are some instances in the language Level Ones that seniors can take that after three years of another language or a junior for that matter.
Do you have any idea what numbers we're talking about?
I don't have that specific, uh, breakdown in front of me, um, based on that particular instance of...
Just, uh, just your feel for it, an approximation, are we talking about adding five or six students, 10 students, just an idea? Because again, what we're saying here is we're going to add a teaching position for students that want to elect to take one year of language so that they don't have a study hall or so they don't waste that one period. And again, I'm not, I, I, I'm all for them using that period more productively than a study hall. Again, can we afford that as a school district to be able to do that just for students that want to take that one additional course?
At language Level One, it's...
No, I want to hear, I want to hear first, if I may, go ahead.
Language Level One, uh, we currently have requested 12th grader Spanish One, I have no Spanish One requests. Uh, in French One, I have one 12th grader and one 11th grader requesting that. Now, these change, uh, throughout the summer as Level One requests would come in, maybe something doesn't work. I, I would say under a dozen students in that particular scenario. Yep.
Okay, uh, again, it's, it's a, nothing exists in a vacuum, this is a multi, multi-year process. So years ago at the, at the high school and all across the district, one of our specific goals, especially at the high school, uh, you know, we did this back in 2002 at the middle level, is eliminate study halls. Uh, why we want to pay a $75,000 a year employee to, to warehouse kids in a study hall, uh, to me doesn't have educational value. Uh, the high school, is anybody who went to the Southmoreland High School years ago or, or works there, years ago had, uh, so many kids in study halls that, that we couldn't put them in classrooms, we had to put them in the auditorium, cafeteria, things like that. Over the last four years, uh, Mr. Croftcheck has done an amazing job of getting kids into classes. That's, that's, it's kind of a cultural change. Just because you may not need the credit for graduation, we want you to continue your learning. Again, it's about the goal of high quality learning for everybody and it's, it's a cultural shift. Now, it's kind of disingenuous on our part, it's kind of, uh, we have some reciprocal accountability here. If we want kids to be taking, uh, legitimate classes, learning opportunities, we have to let those classes be what they are. And, and at the high school level, in the last eight years, six years, we've eliminated a, uh, business information, computer technology position, a home economics position, another foreign language was our German program, eliminated all of those, uh, be, as, as we continue to, to fight this, uh, budgetary issue. So, uh, what, you know, obviously what, uh, Mr. Croftcheck is saying is those numbers are small, but at least from an educational perspective, if, if we have that handful of kids, seniors, that are getting into that Language One or Language Two, uh, that's kind of philosophically aligned with what we've been trying to do.
Are there no other choices for them? Like when you get, you get senior year and you've got a study hall and you have an election, there's no other choices besides a language? There are no classes that a, a, a student can get into that we don't require to add a position? Uh, there are not, there are no other, this is it?
It's not that there are no choices, but once you start contracting programs, you know, going from two family consumer science teachers to one, going from two, uh, uh, computer science teachers to one, uh, three languages to two languages. Yeah, physical education has gone from four to two teachers. So you can't even pick up that extra elective credit of physical education anymore because the classes are, are being populated by other students that need, uh, either requirements in those areas or electives also.
The only thing I'm concerned about is that if this is a short-lived, uh, scenario for you, if we, once we make the hire, then if three, and again, I'm, I'm presuming, I don't know, maybe you can give me more data on this, but I'm presuming that we're not talking about ever increasing enrollment here. So at some point, what you have now for a number of students that are creating this problem, eventually as they graduate, we're not coming up with a lot more students behind them. And if we're not, what we created is a position here that's going to last forever with students that we don't have to...
After those kids are coming, I think it's, well, there is, uh, the cause, I guess, is something that we have not seen the effect of until now. But several years ago, we began to offer, uh, rather than foreign language in the middle school as an exploratory, we now have foreign language one, okay, which then creates that need for the, the higher level coursework moving forward.
Without having foreign language be a one course in the middle school, we never would have been able to reach our goal of, of offering advanced placement foreign language. So, uh, what, the first part of what you're saying is, is correct, but we're, we're actually adding not necessarily, uh, enrollment, but we're adding, well, we are, I mean, we are adding significant enrollment to our language program, but we're adding programming, uh, not this year, but the following year, we'll be offering, we're bringing on AP Spanish and...
Both Spanish and French.
And that's actually a Level Five course. And kids could never, before, kids could never attain that because they were never taking the Language One until they got to the high school. And that's, again, that's a part of our, our long-term comprehensive plan.
And again, based on what you told, Mr. Roach, you're thinking 35 is what you're looking at for some of those classroom sizes?
You can see upwards of that if, if you include every single request at some levels.
Anyone else question or comment?
Why was the price being not a planning voting meeting? Has it always has been in the past?
Because I neglected to write the word planning at the top of the page, I guess. I don't know, no, no specific reason.
Normally in July, we just have one meeting because it's kind of slow with the middle of summer stuff.
So other than your failure to put the right wording on it, that's why we don't have, we can write the vote tonight?
Pardon me?
Because you failed to put the, the wording on it, is that what you said? You failed?
Well, you, you can discuss, are you talking about voting on a budget?
Yes.
Oh, we can't vote on a budget because we didn't have 10 days to advertise it? We are having a voting meeting tonight, Mr. Alt, but we couldn't vote on the budget.
On the budget.
We, we couldn't vote on the budget because based on when the last meeting occurred and, uh, the, our ability to, or the newspaper's ability to publish it, uh, we needed 10 days advance notice, uh, so we, we had to have the special meeting on Saturday. We even tried and then, uh, the solicitor informed me that we couldn't do this, to say, uh, to the courier and the trip, can you just put it on your webpage, will that count? No, that doesn't count. So between the last meeting we had and tonight, we did not have the proper time to legally advertise the fact that we were, um, voting on a budget because the vote on a budget requires a 10-day public notice prior to the day of the, um, of the vote.
Is that correct, Mr. Patonic, you can elaborate on that, sir?
Absolutely correct, we discussed that late, uh, Thursday, uh, last week, uh, and I researched the requirement about the public advertisement to be absolutely sure that you couldn't do it the electronic way.
So tonight is a voting meeting?
Absolutely.
So if I made a walk-on motion about the budget?
No, you don't have 10 days for tonight for the budget.
No, 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 you can't have it both ways.
This is, you can have a regular voting meeting tonight.
If this is a voting meeting, then I have the right to make a motion.
But not to pass the budget, not to pass the budget tonight, but because 10 days have been allowed.
Sure it did, we did it the other day, we made different scenarios.
But, but we had given 10 days notice.
You gave 10 days, not as for the 30th.
Well, if I make a motion, then we'll just have to postpone.
So in other words, you're, you're asking us to not follow the law, is that what I'm understanding?
No, I'm not asking you to do anything other than honor what, uh, if I make a motion and I get a second, this is a voting meeting. Having said that, I have no intention of making it because I have more or less have washed my hands of this whole matter. I do have a couple of comments to make though, in, in reference to this budget. First of all, I think it's a shame that you kind of held the support staff hostage. I know you're going to fall back on the legal ramifications of, uh, why they can't be paid, but as I asked Mr. Patonic in our phone conversation, should this meeting or should this budget not be passed tonight, and this continues, you're not going to pay your new electric bills, your new sewage and utility bills and any other reoccurring expenses. I do believe these people could have been accommodated, but you chose to take and make them have hard times.
Uh, and not only them, but myself, Dr. Scott, the gentleman sitting over here, the gentleman sitting over here, we did not single out SEIE, please, please understand that.
Well, now with your on that matter, did, did all the administrators, uh, direct deposits where they stopped?
Yes.
And, and board members can verify that?
Everybody's.
Okay.
All 12-month employees.
And I, and I don't think it's a fair comparison to compare your salary to someone out there, but besides that point, uh, you know, I think it's a shame you did it, I think it could have, they could have been accommodated, but obviously that's neither here nor there. Comments I'd like to make are this, this board does not have the heart, the ambition or the moral responsibility, nor the administration, to do what needs to be done and tighten its belt. This, this tax increase that you're talking about is, is not even a Band-Aid, not even a Band-Aid on what you need. What you need to do, starting today, is tighten up your budget. But nobody wants to hear that and I'm getting off the train, I'm not making the motion, but you teachers that came today, I've said it before and I'm going to tell you again, some of these people up here are waiting for money that's never going to come. You know what, you can think about Wolf getting re-elected or getting elected, but the House and the Senator controlled by Republicans and they're not going to give the money that he wants to put into education. So you're not going to get that in all probability. And in my discussions with Mr. Marnell, we talked about next year and any of you can go into his office and talk to him, this isn't something that I made up. The way I see it from our discussions, next year, there's not going to be, you can't raise taxes in 10 years to the amount of money that you're going to need. So next year, we'll be reading about people being laid off or programs being cut in Southmoreland. Because if you think raising taxes is the answer, it's not. If you would just tighten the budget, 1 percent, 1 percent would bring you in 270,000 dollars. If somebody told you in your household, you had to tighten the budget 1 percent, you could and would do it, but we can't do it here? I tried to explain to you that we can do this and nobody has to suffer, but you know what, the further you kick this can down the road, you're going to find out what's going to happen. I'm done preaching, you guys do what you want to do. Thank you.
Mike. I was, I was, but, Croftcheck, you gave me some figures about what you expect this coming year. Have you projected, based on Dr. Scott, what he's talking about, the number of students that are now taking first level language courses, have you projected what the numbers will be, 15, 16, 16, 17, 17? Have you done any projections at all? Do we know how much it'll increase? If it's going to be 35 students per teacher, are we going to jump to 40 in 15, 16? Any projections at all?
Well, if you move to Level Five in both languages and, and the students, the, take French Four, for example, the 75 students move from French Four to French Five into that level, that right there, you're looking at three sections or two, uh, large sections of students alone just in Level Five. Moving up to Level Four, um, use an example of French, uh, you would see around the same numbers moving from three to four, uh, it just keeps moving exponentially, um, as the ninth graders come in.
And that, and that's been the pattern? In other words, when you start making those offerings at the elementary level, you're finding that these students are going to three, four and five and, and they're, they don't just bottom out, it doesn't end there, they end up increasing by going up a year?
Usually when a student goes all the way through Level Three, they usually commit to go to Level Four as well.
Okay, that's what I want to know. All right, thank you. Thanks, Dan.
I have one more, uh, question I have. When I was contacted about the meeting for Saturday, I was, I explained that the one day that I could not be there was Saturday. No accommodations could be made. No accommodations could be made for that?
Yeah, well, we just went with the majority that could be there.
Okay. Just curious.
Anyone else with questions or comments?
By having it on Saturday, Mr. Alt, which was the earliest day we could have it, based on the ten-day advertisement, that accomplishes our common goal of getting everybody paid as soon as possible.
Anyone else? Mr. Riller?
Maybe just kind of, meeting puts me in a reflective mood here. And I, and I think back of, I used to sit around the table here in the nineties, and I lived on Arthur Avenue, had kids in school. And then about once a year, one of my neighbors would show up at these meetings, and he would tell the creation story, the biblical creation story. But he had a summary version of it, and in his version of it, God first created morons, and then he created school board members. That, then he would philosophize on that. He may have said idiots or something. And, yeah, actually, he was a good neighbor, and, and I think he was a good reminder that all of us have finite, we have finite wisdom. We, we, we only know as much as our minds and where we sit and making honest judgments as we see the world, as we, and that is a finite judgment. And to someone, what I consider to be an honest, authentic judgment and a decision, to somebody else, it's nonsense. And thank God I live in America where we have that kind of tolerance of various points of view and various decisions that are, that are made. And that especially comes up in, in, in these kinds of discussions and at, at, at budget times, many times. I would just say, we can use various measures. I consider the budget that we have arrived at and that the administration has presented here as being high-quality education that I'd be proud of, and we can use various measures. We can see it in different ways. I have many neighbors, and I drive back and forth. We don't have kids, but I see their cars parked along the road, and these parents bring their kids. They're modest-income parents, but they care that their parents' kids have a good education. I want to continue that for them, and I hope this board does, and that's what I see this budget doing. In taxes, again, we can define low taxes, we'd have various definitions of it. I consider third-lowest in West Moreland County taxes, low taxes. That's what I consider it, and that's what this budget represents as, as it's being proposed here, whether it's 2.8 or 2.9. I consider that low taxes. So, again, I have finite vision, meaning we all have limitations, but that is, is my understa-- I'm planning to come on Saturday morning and planning vote, supporting, and I will do it heartily of the budget as it's being presented here.
Just one comment. I agree with Levi wholeheartedly. I think we have a award-winning school here. In fact, I even had parents tell me as late as today that they're happy that their kids are part of this school system, that the students are doing quite well, they get the support and the help that they need when they need it. Also, the particular parent told me that they have friends that are currently thinking about moving into the, into the district, and one of the key things that they're looking at is high-quality education, and they feel South Moreland fits the bill, and they are currently looking for a house in the South Moreland School District. So, when you get endorsements like that unsolicited from the public, and current, the current parents and future parents and students, I think that says a lot. And again, I wholeheartedly agree with Levi. I think we have a quality system here, and I also agree that we should keep it moving. Not saying down the road, we might have to look at, look at a different way to look at the budget. There might be things we need to do, but for right now, I think that I'm ready to also, I'll be there Saturday morning and be ready to vote on the budget at that time. Thank you.
Mike, will my scenario be on for voting on Saturday? Or is it only the budget that we voted down at the last meeting? Is that up to you to make that decision, whether that scenario is on the budget or not, or do we have to vote on that?
Certainly, the agenda as it's written has the scenario that administration's recommending. If that is voted down, then we would obviously look at another scenario. Unless the consensus of the board is they would like to do it another way.
So that we, so that on Saturday, it'll be the option of either voting for a tax increase or vote the budget down. There'll be no other choice. That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Potter, Karen, am I correct in my answer?
Well, that's the first choice. The second choice would be to bring forward at that point the alternate plan. Then it depends on whether or not you have the adequate numbers for the villages, for the different counties and everything, to be able to fill in all the appropriate blanks that need to be covered.
Did Jim just do that on scenario one? Is that not, is that not filled in with all of the Ts crossed and the Is dotted? So, all I'm saying is scenario one that I presented, if we, if we, we're not voting on that, obviously, tonight.
Correct.
And that then will not even be a topic of discussion on Saturday. We will only be voting on the budget that the administration submitted.
I am not rolling to preclude it from discussion. I'm merely saying that if someone is going to make a motion different than the administration's, then they need to be able to supply adequate information to cover all of the things that I described at the last meeting. It may be, from a very fast look, I was looking over some numbers with Mr. Marnell, that there might be adequate information to do that. Of course, then, the alternative is if someone makes a completely different motion, then we're going to be expecting Mr. Marnell to go and get his calculator, and we may have to recess for a while for that to be accomplished.
So then, and again, my question is, that motion will have to be made on Saturday. It will not be made tonight to consider Saturday. There's nothing to be considered Saturday except--
It can't be considered the day of. If the President decides that he wants to put it on the agenda, he has that authority.
Since you have presented this, at least people know what these numbers are, so if they do like these numbers, I would think that they would vote against the administration's budget so that this could be put on the table. So, it is a good thing that you did ask Mr. Marnell to present this, so that they do have these numbers to see, to look at.
Now, your scenarios, I believe, will also include an adjustment to the Homestead-Farmstead. Is that correct, Jim? The Homestead-Farmstead--
I have those adjusted numbers as well.
So, we will have those prepared as well for Saturday.
Yeah, and that's what I was referring to. I was looking at those numbers with you.
But those numbers are included in the administration's budget, though.
Well, the--
And it has to be, otherwise--
They're there, yes, but he's also figured out-- I thought about the Homestead-Farmstead exclusion resolution.
Right, exactly. You figured that in the, in the administration's budget.
I penciled in my calculations on the back, so we have it for the, the three scenarios.
All right. So, what you're saying then on Saturday, Mike, the administrative budget, the administration's budget will come up for vote? If it's voted yes, then we don't look at any alternatives? If it's voted no, then we can look at the alternatives? Is that what you're saying?
Right, that's what I understand, because the administration's budget was posted for thirty days, so it is on the agenda because it was posted thirty days ago. So, that's what I would understand, and then that way, if it's voted down--
Even though, but we did vote it down. We voted it down at the last meeting. It was posted thirty days ago. We voted it down at the last meeting. Does that mean it's done? I mean, we didn't, it's not like that budget is still going on. That budget was voted down at the last meeting.
Let me ask a question. So, was it voted down or is it just not passed? What would be the--
You can't get a majority to do anything.
That's what I'm saying. So, is it considered voted down and not, no longer posted thirty days? Or is it--
Well, no, that's not the problem.
That's what I'm asking.
The posting part of it is not the problem.
So, is it still on the agenda? Or, like you just said, is it voted down? Can't go anywhere? Is it an open?
Well, I mean, the administration has presented its plan to be on the agenda. If a majority of the school board here at a voting meeting decides that they want something else on that agenda, then it would take a majority to do that.
But it can't be done tonight because we need the ten days posted, correct?
No, you, you--
You can, you can vote tonight to put a different budget on the agenda.
Yes.
But you can't vote on a budget.
Right, exactly. You can't approve it tonight. You can't approve any budget tonight.
And that's where Mr. Alt's question came in, is it a planning meeting or a voting meeting? And I said it's both. I just didn't write the word "planning" up there. So, if you want to set Saturday's agenda that looks different than what we sent out, you certainly have the prerogative to do that.
If the President might choose to give, go through these motions and put down one or give us all alternative votes for it? Because if it passes, if it's not in writing, people are going to hesitate not to vote or vote because there is only one. And, and with that in mind, I, I think they need to see to, so that they do have a choice. If they want the administration's recommendation, fine, vote for it. But they should be given a choice in writing, and, and if, say, Bob's, Bob's budget passes, then we have a budget. And it'd be posted for thirty days for the public, I assume, to make any comments about it.
No, that's it. That's it.
Well, that's it. You know, either way, what is the harm in posting two options?
What, what, just, just a suggestion to the Chair of just testing where, where this is with the group of Mr. Colero making a motion of the idea of testing the idea of floating, of having his budget--
Well, I don't, I, I think we did that last time. I'm not sure we want to play this floating thing that we did last time. I think either we vote to add it to the, to the budget scenario on Saturday, or we don't.
Right, okay, that's, that's fine.
Budget discussion. Let's make sure we have all the discussions, so everybody has all the facts first before we move to what would be on the agenda or not on the agenda. That way, if anyone else has anything they want to throw out, maybe Mr. Marnell would have to get numbers for Saturday for that. So, let's make sure we have all of our discussion before we decide what's happening Saturday. Anyone?
Just so--
Mrs. Rhodes?
I would like to be clear with the legality here, is what you're proposing, that in addition to the administration's proposed budget, that there would be a, a second proposal of one of these other plans? All right, I understand that.
Question.
Mr.--
Which proposal are we going to vote on first on Saturday? Now, you're going to, they're, they're talking about another proposal. Which one comes up first?
Whoever speaks first.
Well, let's forget about Saturday first. Let's make sure--
No, I'm not going to forget about Saturday.
No, I'm saying, let's make sure everybody's discussed the budget, so if anyone else has anything they want to bring up first.
I think we're pretty clear on the budget.
So, Mrs. Rhodes had one more thing to say before Mr. Potonic.
That was my question, I think.
Okay.
Is it legal to have two motions, I mean, two options and vote on A or B? Or do you have to have the motion and vote on this up or down?
Somebody has to make a motion for one of those, has to be seconded and have a vote on it.
Before you have a discussion on what you're going to put on the agenda, why don't you get a motion and a second to, to go ahead and, and have an alternative budget presented? Does that make sense?
I don't want to call for that. I think that the President should do that or remember.
How did, how did the administration's recommendation get on, on the sheet?
Because it was posted last month, while it would have been--
According to policy, the superintendent--
Because the superintendent has the authority to do that.
And members of the board do.
And we voted, we voted that that was the preliminary budget that we were going to post and look at.
But see, but we voted, we did not vote to approve that, so I think we'd be starting, it would seem logical that now we're looking at it again, brand-new. Would it not seem that administration budget is exactly in the same category as my scenario one? Because that budget that the administration presented was not approved, so it's done. Now, you could present it again, which we would do on Saturday, and get to vote for it again. And I'm adding another scenario as all, I'm, that makes sense to me, David, but that may not be legally, but again, once we did not approve that budget last Thursday, then it became a dead issue. Why is it automatically--
No, it's, it's not a dead issue. I, I thought about that.
Okay.
Actually, I don't want to get too involved in this, but I actually went to a book on parliamentary procedure and found a section, but the bottom line here is that the, the superintendent, under your policies, and maybe even without the policy, I haven't really thought about that that far, has the authority, under our own policies, to present items on the agenda. And that's happening with the agenda that was sent out to, I mean, for the board to have. Now, the fact that, you know, it didn't pass, nothing passed in the way of a budget at the previous meeting, doesn't prevent or forbid the administration from doing that. Having said that, it's not illegal to have something else considered. And I'm pointing out that if you want to make sure that it will be in paper, then it would take a, a motion and a second tonight to request, or to require that there be a second motion available, whatever plan it is that you're talking about, so that all the numbers would be available.
Let me ask this question. If someone makes a motion for Mr. Colero's proposal, and it gets a second and it's passed, isn't that sort of like voting on the budget where we would have a good idea what's going to happen Saturday?
No, I, I agree with you. I just want to make sure everything's legal.
I, yeah, I-- No, it's, you're still going to have two choices.
All you're doing is setting an agenda for Saturday.
You're setting an agenda. You're not, you're not passing a budget tonight. You cannot--
Well, I agree with that. I just want to make sure everything's--
You're setting an agenda for, you know, what's going to be in writing in front of you on Saturday morning. And if one, and if both of those fail, then plan on having a long day.
Does anyone else have any other proposals out there that they wouldn't want Mr. Marnell to be prepared for?
Because now's the time to do it.
So, for Saturday, if we put another proposal on the agenda--
It's different than what's here.
Well, it would either be the current, the current proposal, the current superintendent's budget's proposal, and then one of Mr. Claro's, or two of Mr. Claro's. Would we have to advertise that?
No, it's already advertised. We've advertised--
But it doesn't matter that there'd be another option then?
No.
Because the numbers would be different?
Well, as long as the numbers are lower.
As long as the numbers, as long as you're not increasing taxes. And the other question is, which I have, I hope I don't ever have to roll on this, as to whether or not you can increase expenditures, but definitely, you can't increase taxes.
Does anyone have a motion for what proposal you want on the agenda? We're not voting on the budget. We're just voting on what proposal will be on the agenda. Does anyone have a motion?
I'm making a motion to put my scenario--
This is in addition, I'm sorry. This is in addition to what the administration's already proposed.
Right. It's a given that the administration's proposal is on the agenda for Saturday. That's a given, because it's already on the agenda. I'm proposing that we add another item to the agenda, which is the second, which is my scenario number one, to be added to the agenda for Saturday, to be voted on along with the administration's budget.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Most of my Mr. Colero, second one, Mr. Alt, for Mr. Colero's scenario one.
Scenario one.
Roll call?
Mr. Weisstel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Pelikowski?
No.
Mrs. Rhodes?
No.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes six to three. Anything else from anyone on the budget before we move on? Athletic policy?
My, yeah, one more thing. Should I be able to change my plan? Will we be able to waive procedure so that we can vote on the budget, if I can make it in here?
Saturday?
Yes.
That's where we're voting on Saturday?
I know, but is that the only issue we're voting on?
Taxes and.
Like, three or four items?
They're all, all of the things that go along with the passage of the.
I would ask that the budget be, since I can't be here, other than maybe for a short, brief period, that that be the first agenda item?
It has to be. It has to be, because everything else is set up.
Very good, thank you.
Athletic policy?
We had a group of administrators looking at our, both our athletic policy and the administrative regulations that go along with it, and you received a copy of the proposed policy, Policy 123, that the administrative group had put together. This evening, I'd like that committee, or a member of that committee, to review with you the changes that were made, and then provide some opportunity for your input. And we can do one of two things this evening, you know, we can post it if, if, you know, we make changes that you want this evening or tonight, we can just discuss it, and then, you know, post it at a future meeting, so.
The committee that has been looking at the athletic policy 123 for the last couple of months has been Mr. Kropchak, Mrs. Saint Amant, Mr. Clair, Mr. Swink, myself, and then more recently, we've gone over and reviewed things with Mr. Beistel and had some input as well. As you could, well, as you can see, the original policy dates back to 1983, so it's over thirty years old. And very simply, the process that we're trying to follow athletically very closely mirrors what we've done academically in terms of attempting to be successful as a school district. You know, a long time ago, first and foremost, we realized that if we had any hope of improving academically, we needed to be willing to honestly confront our reality, no matter how brutal that reality may be. And at the risk of beginning an uncomfortable conversation, we unfortunately don't have much of a legacy of athletic success at South Moreland. That is our brutal reality. And one of the things, in going back to the original policy, in the very first paragraph of the original policy, the statement, really the purpose statement, which is your goal, and back in 1983, we stated our purpose, saying the success of any season should be judged on the number of participants and student spectators, new skills acquired, and good citizenship and sportsmanship taught, rather than on the number of games won or lost. That was the goal of the athletic program, and, you know, to a degree, we can debate how well we've achieved that in the last thirty years. But several years ago, just as we started building successful academic programs, we are fully invested in building successful athletic programs. We don't say that kids shouldn't have skills, we shouldn't have participants, actually that's a key component of our new policy, students, student spectators, that's not part of our policy, but we're not saying that's unimportant. Good citizenship, sportsmanship. The problem, I guess, with our goal back in 1983, as we looked at it, was it's really an "or" statement. And academically, years ago, we talked, started talking about "and" being a genius term, and "or" being a tyrannical term. You can be, you can be a school district that has a high percentage of kids who are economically disadvantaged and be very high achieving. You can be a school district that builds winning programs and promotes positive sportsmanship. And that very simply, we know that goal statements that are short, our academic goal statement for the district is high quality learning for all, five words. This isn't very many. Our goal athletically in the South Moreland School District, build winning programs and promote positive sportsmanship, stated very simplistically, and then very simplistically have gone on to list three objectives. If we are going to achieve that goal, what are the things that we have to be focused on that will help us towards that aim? Our first objective, increase athletic participation in order to develop winning programs, expand feeder systems to allow more students at younger ages to participate in the athletic programs, and then, of course, we also have to provide appropriate access to athletic facilities for our students that adequately addresses the district's ever-expanding sports programs. Everything that follows in the five-page policy is a result of that one goal and those stated objectives. Why don't I, why don't I just stop there for a moment and get some reaction, because that obviously is the meat of the policy, is saying that this is who we think we are at South Moreland, and what we're trying, what we're trying to do.
Another thing, a good thing to want to add on this, because since 1983, there's been a lot of, what do you want to call it? Updating things and how things should be done in the athletic programs, especially just like the weather thing. Some of our kids cannot practice, kids can't practice because school's shut down. This eliminates going on to other school districts because they got to shut their program down to free or close to participate there. And that's one of the changes in here that I really like, but then you got to go back to the 707. So I think right now, it's a great deal that these gentlemen have taken this on, to go through this, and go through it, and actually be better for the students of our school district that are participating in sports.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I kind of reflect back on the, in the, that actually winning, winning programs evoke strong participation. Both kids like to participate in them, and citizens like to attend. Just in the eighties and early nineties, our boys' basketball teams, and we've had strong girls' basketball team programs, but I remember very well during the boys' basketball program, filled, virtually filled. Why? Because we were proud of the team, the team that was winning. So I, I'm agreeing here, I don't think they're either-or character, building character and participation and winning, but winning certainly elicits strong support from.
You have a winning program, you have a relationship with everybody, community and everything else. Everything falls into place with your education. Students get a chance to maybe get scholarships with good programs, and everything got to work together, community, parents, and the whole nine-year-old.
Dr. Scott, could you explain, I see here it says, if adequate academic performance is not maintained, the student will be assigned to academic intervention. And I understand what academic intervention is, but is there a cutoff at some point where we say, regardless of the academic intervention, they've not achieved a level that would allow them to continue to participate? Or is there no level that they could always participate as long as they are involved in some academic intervention?
As we continue the discussion, I would invite Charlie, Dan, Dan, to, just so you can be available to talk. I think the first question, Mr. Colero, is something I'm going to have Dan talk about. There are PIAA requirements.
Okay.
And the first thing that we did in updating the policy was to make those eligibility requirements align with current PIAA policy, and we've done that. So, Dan, you want to continue that?
The basis grades are monitored, and the student-athlete has to be passing four full-credit courses to be able to be eligible to participate. So regardless of the intervention, if you're not providing passing marks for a minimum four, that would be a course that meets every day, not just for a semester, then you're not able to participate.
As far as the passing grade, I'm assuming that is a C?
The passing grade would be a D.
As in boy?
D.
D as in dog?
Dog.
It's hard to hear, so I can't always hear you up here.
Yeah, it's aligned pretty specifically with PIAA standards.
Okay.
Now, as we're going through the discussion, again, always focusing back on our goal of building winning programs and promoting positive sportsmanship, what is building winning programs? We had a lot of great discussion about that, and I, our discussion kind of centered around, if you haven't had a winning record in the last six years, then let's focus on, whatever your team is, on having a winning record. If you have a winning record, then let's focus on a goal, individual goal for that team, let's qualify for playoffs. If you qualify for playoffs, let's win a section title. If you want a section title, let's focus on winning a round in the playoffs. If you've done that, then how about next year, let's win two rounds in the playoffs? And if we keep focused in doing the right things that are aligned with that goal, ultimately, and some of you guys are better historians than me, as far as a team sport goes, we might actually, at some point, bring home a WPIL championship, which South Moreland really needs. On the second page, we didn't really change much, except that we added some titles to add clarity, and then the only other, the old policy said only our school physicians could determine things like who is able to participate and not, based on injury, and we know, as qualified as our physicians are, they don't have the daily contact with our kids, and then probably back in eighty-three, I don't even know what we had in terms of professional trainers, but our athletic trainer is so involved in the whole Excel program, we want the trainer to have that ability also, to work with the coaching staff and the parents in determining who is fit to play and who is not fit to play. We thought that was very important. We just talked about the eligibility, and if there's no more questions on that, something that was interesting is our discussion on the school closing. In the past, Dan, was it in the previous policy that you could not, was that actually policy? Or was it just practice?
I believe it was practice.
Previously, if schools are closed, students may not practice, students may not play. And over time, some schools have similar practices or policies, some schools don't. We wanted to align what we do with what the PIAA allows, and the statement in red there is directly from PIAA guidelines, a school which is closed may participate during the period the school is closed, and we added, at the discretion of the athletic director and district administration. And here's our discussion that we had on this, is that we can't count how many times that schools are appropriately closed at six o'clock in the morning, and then by noon, the sun's out, the roads are dry, but we can't, because it's our practice, we can't let anybody in our gyms, we can't let our kids go play their game. Sometimes it's a wind chill issue, and then by, it's twenty-five degrees in Bali by the afternoon. Sometimes it's been an electrical outage, and the power comes back on, but we haven't been able to allow our coaches and our kids to practice, they can't go to games. So if we're trying to build winning programs, what happened this winter was we essentially had a week where our basketball team couldn't practice, and they just had to show up when they were allowed to and go play a game without any preparation, without any practice, and several of those days were days where it was appropriate, would have been, to allow them to come in. Situation also with our wrestling team, going into the playoffs, kids that qualified for the sectionals couldn't prepare until school was in session, and that made it very difficult. Also, Charlie talks about how difficult it is, the WPIL requires that you have to get your games in by a certain date so the playoffs can begin. So what we started doing this winter is, all those non-section games that we wanted our kids to play so they could work on their skills and have a better experience, we had to start canceling those altogether, because we had to play the required section games and matches, and then those non-section things that had been postponed, they just fell off the calendar because we couldn't get them in. And we also discussed that because of weather issues and being respectful of our families, if school is closed, practice could not be mandatory. And it would be up to the coaches and Charlie and Dan Kropchak to make sure that, you know, kids were getting rides, and also, a very big responsibility that they willingly want to take on, is saying, no, it's, the weather forecast is not improving, and we're not going to, we will always err on the side of caution, but in those instances where it's just silly to not allow them to come in, we want to be able to use that to help us build our winning programs. Kids need practice time, they need court time, they need time on the mat, they need to be able to play their games, and not have short, their season shortened, and if anything that you guys wanted to add that I didn't catch up on?
I think you did it all.
One thing I would add that I thought was important was that we spent a lot of time talking about not only what we wanted to do differently athletically, but also tie it into academics. You know, Dr. Scott talked about the parallel between the two, that is true here as well. Simple statements to try to do well, set high goals. One of the things Dr. Scott and the rest of the group would like to do is begin the year, talk with all the coaches about this policy and the change. This is our direction, this is the way we'd like to go, this is what we would like to give you as expectations, just like we do with anything else, we can set our essential outcomes, this is what we would like to do academically, this grade level for this year, this is what we would like to do as a program this year. And we will adjust those goals and change them as we accomplish things, or find that something we tried was not successful. It is a process, and I think it's something that I'm very proud to say that we spent a lot of time thinking about. And the policy that's been around for a long time, probably one that we haven't spent a whole lot of time thinking about, we have not. So if you're interested in seeing how this product works, I'm very proud of it.
I have a question. I know you said this meets guidelines for WPIL, with a D as what it basically, does every school district adhere to that, or do they, can they set a higher standard? So for example, could we set a C as a standard for participation?
Yeah, we could. We set locally, yeah.
And that would then hopefully tie in with your expectation for their performance in the classroom?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons we addressed where we put them in the intervention, because if we monitor and we see a kid in trouble, or an athlete, we want to head that off before they get into a situation where, you know, they're barely passing or getting through. We want to make sure, you know, obviously, academics are number one, but, you know, so if we can help a kid before he gets in a situation, that's why we do that weekly report, I make sure the coaches know, and quite a few of them are here, they'll also grab the student-athlete and say, you know, you need to get into that class, because if they're not eligible, I'm not going to help them.
But you wouldn't send them in there if they had a D, because the D's acceptable? You'd only send them if they were below a D?
No.
You would, even if they were, okay.
If they're, if they're showing signs of being, you know, where they're falling below normal performance, or we think they're, you know, have a chance of falling into that position where they might be a D or E, you know, we would rather head them off before they get to that situation, so.
So when you wanted a C level, would you already automatically be in intervention? So when you wanted a C level, would you already automatically be in intervention?
Mr. Colero?
Nope. That's a pretty broad statement.
Well, okay, generally speaking, I won't make it specific, but generally speaking, when someone is C-
When we have a team meeting and have student support discussions, that is when the teacher may bring up the particular student, maybe by subject, that they're not doing well in a particular area. It could be a C, it could be a student that's gone from an A to a C.
Okay.
It's all based on the discussions we have about the students.
You're not looking at just the grade, you're looking at where they are at any given point, whether they're going up or down, whether they're improving-
Yes.
-or they're getting worse, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's not just for our athletes, that's for our student.
Any more discussion or comment?
The next part, which is kind of the fun part, we had a great discussion, we really wanted your input. And this deals with athletic awards, on the bottom of page three or five. The first thing it does is it goes through the criteria for a student athlete being eligible to receive a letter. And as we looked at this, we saw that that is pretty much the way it is, that what we're familiar with everywhere. Football, you have to play one half of the varsity quarters. Baseball, students must play one half of the innings, or be a starting and relief pitcher. Golf, students must start one half of the matches. Track is a little different, students must earn a total of seven points in varsity competition. Wrestling, total of nine points, or start six matches. That's pretty standard stuff. Now, the one thing, however, that I think all of us were surprised, well, Charlie, you knew this, I mean, some of us were surprised was that under the old policy, when an ath- and this is reading from the old policy, when an athlete letters for the first time, he she will receive a letter and a jacket. And for all of us, that was very new from our prior experience. And I think all of us who were involved in high school athletics, it was very standard for, you earned a jacket when you lettered twice in the same sport, or a total of three sports. And we really talked about this within this context. We really want it to have significant importance in being a Southmoreland athlete. And we heard about some examples where students played a sport for one year, lettered, and then they were kinda done with it, because they really didn't wanna make that commitment. We want that commitment. We've changed the requirements for earning a jacket, not earning a letter. And really, our goal is, it seemed in the old policy from nineteen eighty-three, it was written more about making sure that everybody had a good experience. We want kids to have a good experience, that hasn't changed. Good experience and build winning programs. And again, just our informal discussions, Charlie jokingly, or, I mean, we laughed, but he said when he first came to Southmoreland, coming from Conneleville, he'd never seen so many jackets, letterman's varsity jackets, ever, walking around the halls of Southmoreland. We want kids to have the jacket. We want it to really, we want it to really be meaningful. And again, you know, I've been out of high school for an awful, awful long time, but earning my varsity jacket was something that was a point of great pride.
Tell you something, Dr. Scott, I've been out a lot longer than you, and it was a lot tougher to get a jacket when I went to school. You had a letter in seven times, so that you basically couldn't get your jacket until you were at least a senior, maybe if you were junior for really good. You had to be a senior to get that jacket, you'd have to letter seven times. Based on this policy, which is much better than the one you had before, you still only have to letter three times?
Yes.
Which means you could do that in your sophomore year and be wearing a jacket?
You could do it in your freshman year.
Or freshman year, if you're really good.
If you're a sophomore.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, Butch, you played high school sports?
I really can't remember which way I looked at it, kid or student, I shouldn't say. That if he's a good athlete, freshman, sophomore year, he deserves it. Some sophomores and juniors, what I'd like to see, when he becomes a senior, to be proud to wear that jacket as a senior in high school. If he comes under this program, letters twice in the same sport, and stuff like that. You know what I'm saying? Because if he waits till he's a senior, he doesn't get it twice, or he graduates, then how can he be proud of what he's done?
Well, you're right, and I agree, I'm just saying that if you can get it rather early, it seems that you don't have to achieve very much to do it. Like I say, you letter twice as a freshman, three times, you're gonna get a jacket. I mean, I'm not saying that, again, where's the real incentive there to say, you know, this isn't something we give out lightly, we wanna see you participate year after year after year, and perform at your top level?
When he does letter, he gets a letter the first time.
Right, and then same as we did, that's true, and they get a bar for each year.
But still, what I, I still go back to when he's a sophomore and a junior, at least he gets a jacket before he graduates. You know, to be proud of what you wear to school.
But you could get it as a freshman, right?
Yeah, but if he's a good athlete, he's gonna come back.
I'm not saying he's not coming back.
He has to go freshman and sophomore. He got his letter twice in the same sport to get the jacket.
And I knew we'd get some really good discussion out of this. You know, the one thing that we recognize is that we made it twice as difficult.
You did, you did.
You know, so, and again, and, you know, we've been reviewing and got a lot of other athletic policies from a lot of other schools, and that pretty much was the standard, is two consecutive years, or three letters in any sport. And that's where we wanted to go. And then the other thing that we felt was important, however, is that it kind of has to be grandfathered in with this year's freshman class, if you supported, because we didn't really think it'd be fair if a student, I always get confused with this, if you're a sophomore and you lettered as a freshman and got your jacket, now your best friend, who, now you're both sophomores, and now this other sophomore who didn't letter as a freshman, has to be under a different set of rules. So we just thought everybody should be on the, if you supported it, that everybody should be on the same playing field in their class. So this would, the policy would be in effect for everyone if you supported it, but the part about receiving your jacket would be grandfathered in for this incoming freshman class. And then, Mr. Beistel really helped us out with one, that we hadn't, we wanted to, the old policy did this too, we wanted to recognize somebody who just really committed to a sport, and maybe for whatever reason didn't earn that letter, but they showed their commitment. And that's our new number, or is probably shown as number eight, any athlete who participates for three complete seasons in the same sport and does not letter, will automatically receive a jacket and a letter at the conclusion of the third complete season. And that's the part that Mr. Beistel helped us out with. So if you lettered, and if you played a sport your freshman, sophomore, junior year, then at the conclusion of that season, in your junior year, you would be eligible, even if you never lettered. And we think that's-
I'd show a respect back to him, that he was committed to you for a period of three years. And that's what we need here, is commitment.
The only thing different with the awards part that I wanted to bring your attention that we left and removed, under the old policy, again, new information for me, I guess, it says section championships, section champions will be awarded jackets from the school board, with the maximum cost per jacket determined by the school board. You know, we kind of built that, you know, maybe times were a lot better back in eighty-three, but if you win a section championship, we know our booster organizations do great things, and Charlie, you said that we've always given them like shirts, long-sleeve shirts?
Yeah, you usually get like a long sleeve or a hoodie for winning a championship.
What's the cost of a letterman's jacket?
A letterman's jacket's about a hundred dollars.
And the student puts up how much?
Thirty.
Thirty bucks. So we just didn't think it was responsible to leave it, to, obviously, a lot of people differ, that to say the board is going to buy gifts for our section champions. We certainly are working towards that, and want to award them in all kinds of ways. But we didn't think that maybe it was a board, something that the board should be doing.
Any more questions or discussion?
Now, finally, if you supported this policy, we understand that what comes out of this would have to be probably twenty-five pages of administrative regulations that will guide our programs and our coaches in doing these things. They have to be told exactly what our system of intervention is, and all kinds of other things that would flow out of this policy. And if this policy is adopted, our ongoing part of our committee is going to be working on those, it's kinda like rules, that we don't want to employ just in your program, just in your program, system-wide rules for governing our athletic programs that you obviously will want to have and know about, but aren't board-proved.
I have a question for you, Jim. When they pass this policy, will that affect the budget? Obviously, we're gonna increase the number of jackets we're purchasing, it's gonna increase the cost of the sports program, minimal granted, but I mean, is that-
We don't purchase the jackets, Mr. Colero.
I thought you said that seventy dollars is what the cost of the jacket-
Varsity club.
Varsity club takes care of that.
Oh, okay, I thought you said that we paid seventy, okay. Student pays thirty and-
According to the old policy, we did, but we're not doing that anymore.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right.
Another thing that'll probably reduce the jacket, because just like that, if he's a freshman, and he letters one year, he don't get a jacket. So we're gonna reduce the amount of jackets that we're buying from the beginning.
Yeah, but you increase it on the back end, if you're participating-
You might, you can't say you will. You might. It's starting off, you're gonna decrease.
It doesn't matter, though, it's not paid for, it doesn't matter, it's not in the budget, it doesn't need to worry about, that's fine.
Any more questions or discussion from the board? Full business?
Wait, before you go on, Mr. Benz, if I might, you have the option of posting this policy tonight, or waiting until the next meeting. So if you have the desire to go ahead and, you know, begin that thirty-day posting period, we could entertain a motion to post it for thirty-day review and revision. Mr. Beistel makes a motion?
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second by Mrs. Love.
Mrs. Shipley.
Shipley, sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
I'd just like to comment that these individuals, along with Mrs. Sanamont, put a great deal of time into this over the last several weeks, and came out with, you know, what appears to be a much improved product, so thanks to you for your hard work, folks.
Full business, Gatsby forty-five.
It's recommended that the board approve Holly Consulting Group William Penn Highway, Allison Park, PA, to perform a valuation report for the district at a fee of four thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Colero?
No.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to two. Taxpayer exoneration?
It's recommended that the board exonerate a percentage of taxes for the property owned by the former Fraternal Order of Eagles, local Erie one zero zero seven, at the tax by the number of thirty dash zero two dash zero two dash zero dash three two nine, and thirty dash zero two dash zero two dash zero dash three two seven, per the attached formal resolution. And again, last week, we were not able to come up with any percentage that passed, I think we had two votes, one at twenty-five percent, one at fifty percent, neither motion carried. So we have this back on the agenda again, either to be voted up or voted down, that someone will need to recommend a percentage.
Do we have a motion from anyone? Mr. Polakowski, what's the percentage? Thirty-five percent by Mr. Polakowski, do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Shipley, questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight to one. New business, Jacob Creek Watershed.
It's recommended that the board approve the landowner grantee agreement to allow Jacob's Creek Watershed to proceed with the submission of their grant application for the proposed storm water management at the high school stadium complex, per the attached landowner agreement. And the copy that you folks have was the original, and the solicitor made a couple of changes to that. Can you give us an executive summary of what those changes are, sir?
We put in the correct address for the superintendent's office.
It's pretty important.
Designated the president as the appropriate executive officer to sign it, and after discussion with Mr. Barrett, he indicated that there is money in their budget to pay prevailing wage, and to solve our concerns about that subject, so I put in provision that they, on our behalf, would apply for the prevailing wage. He also had indicated, we had a little bit of a discussion about Davis Bacon, and that's a federal requirement, but it's, we don't have to worry about that.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Bid approval for paving of SES SMS campus.
It's recommended that the board approve a bid submitted by Donegal Construction for the repair of the roadway leading to the SES SMS campus, per the attached form resolution. And you have a resolution in front of you, and I'm, Mr. Ponic and Mr. Marnell were involved in the bid opening, so David, you wanna expound upon how we arrived at Donegal Construction?
Unfortunately, it happened because of the disqualification of the other bidders for failing to have, meet the bid specs, and I've listed A, B, C, D, each one of their failures. You then would have to make a decision whether to accept the bid of Donegal Construction, and if so, whether you want to do a base bid of sixty-two thousand five eighty-five, or approve the higher alternate bid, which includes tar and stone chipping in lieu of a tack coat before the final application. So whoever makes the resolution has to indicate whether they're going with the base bid or the alternate bid. And to, then also to designate either the superintendent, or in the superintendent's absence, the assistant superintendent is the person authorized to give the notice to proceed after the contract is signed and all the documents are supplied. And just to make it memorialized as to what we still need, I listed them as to the specific insurance policies that would have to be supplied. And number four, provided that the award of the bid is conditioned upon the school board approving a budget for the 2014-2015 school year on Saturday, July twelve, 2014.
Anybody questions or comments?
Can you get a motion?
Motion? We have a motion first. Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mr. Miller, questions?
Five.
How many?
Five.
Misses achieved?
No. It's the, it's the, it's the only responsive bid, and by that reason, becomes the lowest responsive bid. All of the others had failures in the paperwork.
Having said that, maybe we should put it out of the bid again, because I thought we were talking twenty-four or thirty-five thousand the last time we talked in the ballpark.
You can reject, you can reject the bid, all the bids, and re-advertise, and in which case, I think Mr. Marnell may have some comments about whether or not it can be done this summer. We have serious doubts about that. You wanna comment on what that, what you were informed?
About the-
Timetable.
Timetable, yeah.
Would have to advertise for another three weeks.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly, exactly. This would get us in that window to have it done before school opened. So, again, if we reject a bid, which you can do, then, of course, we have to go back, re-advertise it for three weeks, have a bid opening, and then bring it to a subsequent agenda, which, without a calendar here, we'd have to look at and count. You might get it on for us, maybe a special August meeting. If not, the regular meeting would be very close now.
This wouldn't cover the whole cost, but does this fall under the capital improvements that the administration building money could cover? I know it wouldn't cover all of it, but it would cover like a third or almost half.
If you designated it that way, yeah, I believe you could do it.
So, that's something to consider.
With respect, yeah, I'm sorry, Mike, with respect to what Mr. Marnell said, today's July the tenth. So, if you reject, we advertise for three weeks. I believe we have a board meeting on August the fourteenth. If they could start immediately, there's a possibility we could get it done before school starts.
I respectfully disagree based upon what Mr. Marnell's research indicated about their, how long it would take to do. I mean, one contractor was informing him, and he laid it all out, and it was five weeks.
Okay.
Five weeks?
And a lot of it had to do because of the milling. They were chewing up time with milling. Now, maybe that was excessive, but it caused me to think that, you know, squeezing it in for two weeks might, just doesn't sound right.
Are we talking one from Chestnut Street, where it's the top of the hill?
Yes.
Or are we just talking...
No, the top of the hill. Or right below the crest of the hill would be from the, the bottom of the hill where the division is
Yes.
to where the arms are.
Right, where the driveways would split off at the top.
The driveways, it's split off at the top of the hill, just below the top of the hill if you want to be geographically correct.
And that's going to cost us eighty-two thousand?
No.
Or sixty-eight thousand or whatever?
Either sixty-two thousand five eighty-five or seventy-one six sixty-two.
I think we really need to take a sec to look at every bid.
How close to the other bids were these bids?
Do you have those with you? It's about...
They're down my office. It's fifty-two thousand.
Was the absolute...
Some odd dollars was the lowest difference between the lowest...
Fifty-two sixty-two.
Did not qualify to this.
Now, did they actually tell you what the problem is?
Well, they won't know until they start digging down.
Then that might cost us more, Rick. This is just for milling and paving?
Let's see, to dig down, Lee would know more about the particular details of what that bad section would entail. But, of course, they have to dig that bad section up, repair it, put a better base on it, then, of course, mill down that whole surface from top to bottom.
I understand that, but the only trouble is what's underneath. It's likely will cost us more. Am I right or wrong?
It's very possible, sure.
It's at least theoretically possible. I agree.
Lee, can you expand on that a little bit, please?
Approximately four hundred square yards for the base repair area. And we did put white lines, upper and lower white lines, and most of the contractors looked at that, and they thought that would probably cover the area. But the contractors I spoke to really would have to get down twelve and a half inches to determine what's underneath there.
Are they going down that far on this bid?
Yes.
Twelve and a half inches to find out what the problem is?
I think it's milling down the inch and a half off the top and then going down another eleven inches. For the base.
Another eleven inches on that section that's bad.
In that section it's bad.
Right.
The entire roadway...
Right.
Is approximately eight hundred feet.
The contractor that gave the estimate of five weeks is not one of these that bid on it. It's a separate company that chose not to bid on it. So, the company that originally gave the five weeks, it was from sitting down and doing the contract paperwork to termination of the project. So, the actual work involved was about maybe two weeks of time. But that was a contractor that did not bid on this project. That was a contractor that came out in the spring and looked over the whole situation. And that contractor, by the way, gave an estimate of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, so...
How long did Donegal say?
I really don't know.
We don't know.
So...
We don't know, but...
This proposal, though, they are obligated to complete it by August twenty-second.
Well, you know, I ride up and down the highway, and they mill a mile of the road a day, and the next day it's done. I don't understand how it can take even two weeks to do this job.
Well, I can understand why maybe two weeks because of the fact they don't know what they're going to run into.
Well, that may be true, but...
They want to make sure you give enough time to take care of the problem.
Dig and mill, yeah, I mean, but, I mean, they come in there, mill that off in half a day, and take a backhoe and dig it up, the eleven inches, it's done before supper time. I mean...
No, that's probably just a projection.
Yeah, yeah. And again, the gentleman that bid five weeks, his bid was almost twice what this is. So, you know, apparently, it would seem that maybe his scope of work was a little greater. So, you know, I don't know that would...
Another question. We get to keep the milling?
No. We want, the bids require them to dispose of them.
Do we have the option to keep them?
They have to dispose of them, but we can't acquire them? We have to pay for them?
I think it's bid, the way it's bid, I think they're to dispose of them. So, that would require rebidding if you want to do that.
You mean, it's our product, and we're going to buy it off of them if we want to put down like we did down at the football...
They could dispose of the millings on our property if they so chose, correct?
If you can do that in an environmentally sound manner, yeah.
Well, we can.
Lee, I have a question.
Yes.
Obviously, this job is the right way to do it. I'll presume that because I know nothing about it. Is there a not-so-right way that costs a lot less money that would just patch it?
I think that's what you have out there now when you walk in and look at it.
Well, that's, but it's not patched now. I'm saying if you patched it, would it, I mean, are we talking about ten thousand dollars to patch it?
Well, I think it was patched.
That's what I'm asking. I'm just asking. What, is there anything else that can be done that doesn't cost seventy-one thousand dollars?
We did look at that originally about patching that before, but most of the contractors wouldn't recommend trying to patch that. And if you don't mill down, our curb relief is varied from six inches to two inches, and you would lose your curb if you did not mill down an inch and a half.
Now, to save you money, we chose to do this without involving your architect, which would have added another ten percent or more to the cost, so... I would have preferred an engineer to do this myself instead of me.
Yes.
Was this ever repaired before?
Yes.
Yes, it was repaired, and there were also sections cut out, I think, for a line that was put in.
So, we've already went through that status of repair. We keep going that, we're going to have more money, and it was repaired. What was the problem?
It wasn't mill down completely. It wasn't recovered.
It was patched. There was no excavation that went on. It was a temporary Band-Aid.
Any more questions or comments? Roll call, please. Yeah. Mrs. Shipley made the motion. Mr. Miller made the second. Are we going with which bid?
We needed to know if we're doing the base bid.
Yeah. Letter A or letter B, Mrs. Shipley?
Letter A or letter B, the alternate bid or the base bid? The base bid of sixty-two thousand and change has a binder coat. The alternate bid has a tar and chip rather than a binder coat, which one of the contractors indicated might be a better way to go. I don't know. I've never seen it any done.
Letter A. So, that's a motion. Mr. Miller, is that okay with you, letter A? Letter A, that's base bid, which is sixty-two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. Roll call, please.
Don't you also need to bid on the assistant superintendent who to appoint?
No, we can...
That should need to be added in there? Mr. Polakowski?
No.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Colero?
No.
Mrs. Love?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion fails. Four to five.
We would then entertain a motion for permission to rebid the job, please.
Motion by Mr. Beistall. Second by Mr. Alt. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Federal program grants.
It's recommended that the board authorize administration to submit applications for federal programs grants.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Who's that?
Butch.
Butch. Mr. Beistall. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Cafeteria van?
Yeah, Mrs. Huggins is going to be discussing this a little bit in greater detail than I. But in some of the reports that you received from Mrs. Huggins, she has indicated that the van that is used for transporting food from one building to another is probably not in really good shape anymore. And in terms of summer feeding, this is the same thing. This summer, she has been able to borrow the maintenance van in terms of getting summer food delivered. But the van that currently exists is no longer able to be inspected. It is a nineteen ninety-one forty Conal line, which makes it eligible for classic plates. And in three more years, it can have antique plates. It's been in the district longer than I have. The odometer registers seventy-seven thousand miles on it, but I'm certain that that has turned over at least one time and possibly twice. When it was purchased, I believe, it was originally, one of the vans was used for student transportation. It was retired from that and pressed into service as a cafeteria van. I've parked it outside here if anybody wants to take a peek. So, Lynn, you had a proposal, and I'll let you go from there.
I just want to clarify that the purchase of the van will come from food service funds. What we, this will enable the district to do then is to do away with that van, and then we will use school district funds. And I've kind of been looking for a used van. A new van would be overkill for our department. I was wanting to look for something that was used that would be affordable for us to do what we need to do with it, which is basically, we're going to use it for summer food, to transport food to our feeding sites. And then we use it for a daily run, basically, five to ten miles every day during the school year. We do a bank run, and we transport food between buildings. So, I've been perusing a lot of the used car advertisements online, probably for the last half of the year. And the issue with some of the used vans is because they're cargo vans, they're used by businesses, and you typically see really high mileage on them. So, we found one within the last week at Rankers. It's a used vehicle. It's a two thousand eight, and they were asking ninety-nine seventy-five. And Mr. Mizwa and I went out this week and took a test drive. It seems like it would be a good, suitable van. The van, as Dr. Molner mentioned, that we were using is basically in unsafe condition, and cafeteria workers are actually driving this van. So, I spoke to the gentleman, and we, I asked him to come down a little bit, and he didn't come down as far as I asked, but basically, he came down another two hundred dollars on it. So, what we're asking the board to do is to approve that purchase again. It would come out of food service funds, but we'd like to purchase that van so we could use it as we need to in the program.
Just to clarify, the current van is not owned under the food service cafeteria account. So, it is owned and maintained by the district.
Correct.
This particular van would be owned and maintained by the food service department.
Right.
With the exception of fuel, I assume, right?
Yep, unless we work out something differently, but, yeah, we'll be ninety-seven seventy-five.
The reason this was not on your information packet is because it became available since your information packet came out. So, we apologize, and that's going to happen with the next item. The third quote came in today. So, that's why these are kind of last-minute things that we're talking to you about. Go ahead.
Let's get a motion on the floor, and then if there's more discussion. Do we have a motion or a second? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Now, questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
End the walk-in freezer, Lynn.
You may recall from some of my board reports going back, again, to earlier this year, we had two freezers go down in the district. One was the high school. The other one was a freezer at the primary center. We chose to repair the freezer at the high school earlier this year, which that in and of itself cost us about ten thousand dollars to repair. The freezer at the primary center, we, I wanted to kind of wait on that a little while. We made alternative, we did other things with our food during the school year because I kind of wanted to evaluate if we were going to repair that or if we were going to buy a modular unit instead of repairing the freezer. And the concerns I have with the primary freezer is that the building, as you know, is very old. So, one of the gentlemen who came out and looked at it, you know, just said, you know, that the panels in it are not aligned well. We've got possibly some leakage. So, what we, what I decided to do after taking everything into consideration is as opposed to putting at least five thousand dollars into repairing an old freezer, is we're, I would like to buy a modular unit that will be put in the primary center as a walk-in freezer. And the option that that gives us is if anything ever happened with the way we serve food at the primary center or with the building itself, it could be moved to another location. Actually, been having trouble getting quotes in on three units. And I've had one for a good bit of time, and then just within this past week, got the other two. So, the initial quote that we got is based on the state contract for putting in the modular unit. And again, this will come out of food service funds. It's going to be a brand-new unit as to repairing the old unit. It's going to be placed in the same area where the old one is, again, with the option of, if we ever needed to, it could be moved somewhere else at some point in time. So, it's picture, outside of SES, there's an outdoor freezer, and it's the same kind of unit. It's basically an eight-by-eight contained walk-in freezer. It's going to be placed indoors. But I assume, did you give them the quote that we had on the lowest quote?
What was the lowest quote?
The lowest quote is thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. And the quotes went up to as high as seventeen thousand.
And the thirteen is off the state bid list?
It's a state contract price.
So, even though that's over ten thousand because it's on the state contract, that means we do not have to bid it? Because that was the state bid for us.
But we did, we did because it was over ten. We did seek three quotes. Sometimes you still get better pricing than state if you look around a little bit, but in this case, this was still the lowest price. So, we're seeking approval on this as well. It will be eight-by-eight, yes.
Do we have a motion to put this on the floor? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? And or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Need a motion to adjourn to executive, recess to executive session for personnel.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Personnel, propose additional teaching position.
Uh, Mr. Benz, that will be tabled until after a budget vote. We won't be voting on that tonight, I know the nursing, we can do pending.
Propose nursing assistant position?
Uh, it's recommended that the board create the position of nursing assistant at South Moreland Primary Center at a salary of $25,000 plus benefits, to be paid from federal carryover dollars, with the caveat that the position will be only in existence as long as federal dollars are able to fund it.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel, questions?
Audience.
Questions from the audience, non-agenda item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. FMLA, Leah Govey.
It's recommended that the board approve an FMLA request from Leah Govey, autistic teacher, autistic support teacher at South Moreland Elementary School, beginning at approximately August 25, 2014, to approximately December 3, 2014, with no break in service.
Need a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller, questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Anything else? You said this, that's all you have?
Um, I certainly have no problem with the board turning, you know, rejecting all the bids, but I'm not sure that I'm clear or administration is clear on exactly what kind of bids you want to go out, and the first thing I'd like to make clear is that the existing specs were not prepared by an engineer, let alone an engineer retained to specifically deal with finding the cause of the problem where the large disturbance in the pavement is. And I know that, I, I think it would be safe to say that we were all concerned about not having an engineer involved in that process. Now, that means that if you really are concerned at finding the cause of the problem, that's a different endeavor, I, I think that would involve getting a hydrological engineer involved and that person telling you what kind of testing needed to be done before you even come up with specs to put this up a bit. If, on the other hand, you have a much narrower project in mind of just fixing that area and hoping that it works, then that could be maybe an alternate, or maybe that's all you want, period, but I know, I'm not sure what you expect to happen, and given some other constraints, you know, trying to get this done in the summer, I just question whether that's, you know, going to happen within that time period, so it may mean working on into the fall after school is started, but I, I would, I would ask the president maybe to ascertain from the members, you know, what kind of project do you want?
Okay, why don't we rebid it this way? Rebid it to what you've bid to begin with, and then rebid, have an order bid to cut out what's bad, get it done, put a Band-Aid over it and go.
That's much clearer.
Everybody agreeing with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any other alterness or suggestions?
How do you specify a Band-Aid?
I, I'm not sure how you specify a Band-Aid, but it's, it's just going to be...
No, but I mean, fix the problem right there and be done and go on.
It's essentially repaving.
Not the whole thing, just fix the area.
Not the whole area, no.
Yes.
And, and I think when you get, get that open, and there is a major problem, if you find some pipe down there that's got a big hole in it, then we go from there, but I like Butch's recommendation.
I mean, you have two alternatives, really, I mean, if it comes back at $61,000 and the way the budget is and everything else, and you could fix it for, say, 40, you're saving $21,000 by not doing the whole thing from top to bottom.
But you're still looking at them digging it out, rolling, milling that one section up and digging it out and completely fixing that one section, is that correct?
Yes, well, when you say completely fixing, I mean, we don't have specifications that an engineer has supplied, and I don't know where to get them.
No, I think based on what?
Other than just...
Bid it before, the, the way we bid it before, only just that one section, is that correct?
Why is he shaking his head now?
I'm not doing it. Get an engineer involved.
Mr. Martin, I have a concern about...
It's not money coming out of your pocket.
Coming out of all taxpayers' pockets.
That's right, that's right, and we don't have that kind of money. Everybody wants to run the architect's ear.
If you've got serious concerns about the situation under, then I recommend you use either your architectural firm or, or a different type of engineer who specializes in road surface problems.
Then it's going to cost us $200,000.
Yeah. When I got a headache, I go to my doctor, that's where I start, and if he can't do the problem, or he doesn't know what the problem is, then he sends me to somebody up the line. I don't go to the... We chose not to involve the architect and engineer to save you money, okay? We chose to do it ourselves to save you money. Let's do it, tell them.
Let me ask you a question, if, if somebody comes in just to patch that one section, and I'll use the word patch, that's not what we're doing, but I'm, I'm presuming they're going to, they're not just going to put blacktop over it, they're going to dig down?
Well, they have, totally, they're bidding to take the old product off.
Right, so once they dig down, there will be something that they would be able to come back to us and say, by the way, there is a broken pipe under there, by the way, you have a sinkhole underneath there which is causing, I mean, again, they're going to dig it out and we're going to know once they, you're saying no, David?
Well, no, I mean, they're, they're only going to be able to do that if they can see something that's obvious, if there's some other problem that's deeper underground that is, you know, forcing its way here hydrologically, I, I don't know that they're going to be able to determine that.
Right, I, I, and I agree, all I'm saying is that if they dug down far enough to the base of whatever the issue is, there may be other issues that are beyond than what they'd see, but that should certainly take care of the immediate problem.
And then you would call an engineer if there's a, if there's a sinkhole, we're obviously, and does insurance then come into play? Mr. Martin? I have no clue whether insurance would come into play on a sinkhole. Have to ask our insurance agent.
I think we're just putting the cart before the horse here.
Does anyone else have guidance on what they want, or any additional bids?
I mean, I suggested, and you go from there, okay?
Are we also going to get a bid on repaving it the whole way? I'd like to see repaving it the whole way, and also a bid maybe just to repair that particular crater.
Donegal Construction was going to fix the crater and repave the whole thing, that's what we did.
She's asking for...
Fix in the sense that they're milling it?
She's asking for an alternative.
Right, like, like what's in here?
Which is what, which, right, yeah. Anyone else have anything else?
Is there a motion on the floor?
To do that?
No.
Yeah, I want to know what we're, what somebody's doing.
I want somebody to put a motion on the floor directing us what to bid.
Using the same specifications that we did before with an alternate bid for them to just, to, to completely repair that one section, so we would have two, they would have the two bids, one for the entire thing, just like we did before with the paving every place, the other one for them just to repair and repave that one section.
And that was what Mr. Beistel was saying.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion by Mrs. Shipley, do we have a second?
South.
Second by Mr., Mr. Beistel. Any more questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Sorry, go ahead.
Does that clarify you?
I, yeah, this is a repaving project, I just want to emphasize that, it's not a find the ultimate cause of the water problem, and that could mean that several years or a few years down the road, it could come up again.
That's true.
More questions?
And we're not voting to take care of it indefinitely.
Right.
So, if we would want to find the cause of the...
And I'm not advocating, no.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, if, we would want to find out what the cause of the crater is, I call it a crater because that's, seems like that's what it is, you would then, at that point, advise us probably to get engineering?
Petersburg National Battlefield Park has the crater, go visit.
Yes, I mean, if that's what you want to do, that's, then you're not even starting the bidding process, you're going to go get someone else involved and tell you what needs to be looked into, an engineer.
Any more questions?
I think I've got shot.
Roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Citizens comments? Anything else from anyone at the board? Thank you, good night, we'll see you Saturday. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Beistel, second by Mr. Shipley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, good night.
Hey, Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, I won.